Open our city council workshop Thursday, September 7th, 2017, 7:00 PM. And even though we don't have anybody in the audience, let's start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we start with the approving and amending the agenda, just to reiterate, we all have a desire to keep these meetings moving and get done what needs to get done, but get out of here in reasonable time as well. So, thinking, going back, thinking why we started, why we continued, I guess, doing the workshop was to determine if we had enough information to make a decision on Tuesday. And if we needed more information, it could be presented by Tuesday in a thorough fashion to ask for that from staff. And if we thought it couldn't be presented, or we didn't have enough information, to consider tabling it at the Tuesday meeting, so that we don't have to drag every last detail out tonight, but just make sure we have enough decision for all the council members to feel comfortable that they know how they want to vote on Tuesday. So, if we can try and at least keep that in mind and discuss it thoroughly enough, but then if it gets to a point where we either need more information, can we get it by Tuesday or can we not? And then move on. So, anybody want to, Cory had mentioned, we've got a, the comp plan open houses on here twice, and we wanted to address the contract for the recycling center and the requirement for the prevailing wage. And so, I would like to replace item J on the council items with the recycling contract. Any other changes? All right, and will everybody okay with going through them in order, except for Mr. Peterson doesn't show up, we'll wait till he gets here, or his, and just keep moving. All right. Anything at this point, not knowing what the, do we have any idea on cost at this point?
The assessed value, so it's $158,000 or thereabouts, which I was looking just generally at other 40-acre parcels that are predominantly wet, and it seems high for a wet parcel.
Just missed it again. Any comments on the, is there any flexibility in that?
Apparently not, judging from whatever statute he referenced. It sounds like they're going to go through this assessment, so it'd be interesting to see how that turns out. I did talk to Attorney Rupee about Paul's question regarding the hunting and how people do use it for that purpose, and whether or not if we bought it or acquired it, that that could remain. And I, I've seen it done where, there's a couple of parks in the city that I go to where they do close them down in the fall, and they sign them real heavily, saying the parks are closed for hunting, and they control deer populations and whatever else that way. I think it's just bone arrow, but it could be an indication of size, too. But Rupee wasn't real thrilled within trying to mix like a trail area and a hunting area. But, anyway, that would come later, if he ever did acquire it, deciding what to do with it.
Well, it's a WMA now, and I know it gets heavily used in the fall.
Well, it's about all you can do there.
Yeah, there's not a whole, a lot of good land there.
Unless you're going to just sit and watch critters.
That area over there in Hope Grove along the Rum River, once they do that, they close it, it's hiking trails and things, except in hunting season, and they close it off, except for hunting.
I guess I'm not sure. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
In our park plan, we have no, in our park plan, it doesn't call up our park in this area. I don't know why we would proceed to buy this property for any lump sum of money like that, and it would deplete our park fund, so, like I said, it's not in our park plan. I think it should be, stay within the private property, or the private property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I agree with Councilmember Bettinger. It is not in our park plan, has never been discussed about being in the park plan, and it would just be another parcel that we're responsible for maintaining, and you could say, well, what do you do to it? Well, eventually we'll have to do something somehow to it. And as Councilmember Bettinger said, I think we have about a $200,000 balance, $225,000 balance in our park fund, and that would pretty much deplete it.
Anything else? At this point, they're going to, they're going to proceed with their appraisal, and let us know if there's anything different than $158,000.
Yeah, I can let them know just generally what your feelings are after Tuesday, and then let them proceed on their end.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Could we then, for the meeting on Tuesday, move that to the consent agenda? It's basically, it's just receive and file at this point, unless we would feel that we would act on something on Tuesday.
Or, Mr. Mayor, would you like RCA quick drafted up to deny the purchase of it? Just so we have something formal that you guys have accepted that we can give to Liz for what you...
Well, they really haven't offered a price yet.
No, I think they just, at this point, file it until we hear more from them.
So, do you want it on the consent agenda?
Actually, we don't need it on the consent agenda either. Just remove it, yeah. If at the point they come back and it's $10,000, then that's a different discussion, but...
Liz, did they say, or give you any indication why they wanted to get rid of it?
It's not in their, whatever, long-term plan, you know, they, I suppose, I don't know if they're acquiring other land, and they're dumping some. Their only other thought was that they'd sell it to a private property owner, and they did restrict it to one buildable site, so somebody could just look at it, have it for enjoyment. But I don't even, honestly, I, in looking at it, I don't even know if it's buildable, if you could get a septic site on there.
Well, right now, it's pretty much landlocked.
That, too, yeah. Where do you get in? Because you'd have to impact wetland to get a driveway through, which looks like it would be more than the de minimis, meaning you'd have to go through the major, whatever the term is, the, the bigger application with the DNR for mitigation.
That just surprised me, that they were trying to get rid of a WMA like that.
Yeah, yeah. I would think it'd be no different than the county trying to get rid of little parcels that they own.
Yeah, but I would think with the DNR, their WMAs are a little different, you know, because they've been set aside that way for so many years, and with, you know, everything building up all over the place, you know, those are coming with it, you know, less than nothing.
It sort of seems wrong to sell something that somebody gave them, you know, in a way.
Well, they, you know, we're going through the watershed plan provisions right now, and they're, they want all the sweatlands and say, and stormwater protection, all this stuff. Well, that's basically what that is, and they already have, have it in their name, and it can be protected. So, yet now they're trying to give it away or sell it. It makes no sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that could take care of one DNR salary. Anything else on that? All right, move on to Mr. Peterson's request here. Last meeting, we talked about a couple of things which we've received since then. Maintenance agreement on the stormwater, architectural view, comments from the fire department, gate location and function. And the other question was for the council to address the potential for outdoor storage, which the P&amp;Z recommended not be granted. We felt it should be discussed by the council as to whether we want to allow some outdoor storage there, or agree with the P&amp;Z recommendation. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rick.
I guess I don't see what grounds, you know, we really have to deny outdoor storage. We just, you know, we let A&amp;B expand on theirs, we let the guy who's doing the tiny houses have outstore storage, so why are we segregating this one? To me, I think you're setting precedents if you're trying to do that.
I think that was the discussion for bringing it back, even though P&amp;Z didn't, P&amp;Z didn't really give a reason why they didn't want it, that somebody said, no, it was getting pretty late, and the comment at P&amp;Z was just, told to the council, let them figure it out. And the one person who suggested it, it was just approved, but I don't know that there was any, that I recall any logic behind it, other than I don't think you should do it. After an extensive discussion of how previous in the night they were going to let somebody else do it, so, to me, I didn't think it made sense either. I do like the restrictions were put on the other one, licensed operable mobile vehicles, so it doesn't become a junkyard, but Mr. Peterson's saying that it's not what he's going to allow anyways, so. But, as we say, when you, when you open the door there, I think keeping consistent with the tiny homes, it was licensed operable mobile vehicles. And I think within that, the only other would be the number of vehicles, I think the space is going to limit that to some degree, and I think you had said five.
Yeah.
So, I think if we put, if the council agrees, it's reasonable to have outdoor storage there, and we put the, the considered five items that are licensed operable and mobile, I think it's a reasonable use of the lands.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Some of the discussion I remember was really just revolving around the snow storage space, because they don't have a lot of space, you know, between buildings, and that just keeping that one spot open in the back for pushing snow in that pond, but I don't really have a problem at all with five vehicles.
And I think that part of that discussion, too, is Mr. Peterson's problem to get rid of the snow. If he can haul it away or push it into the stormwater pond in an easy way, that's ultimately his responsibility, he just can't push it out in the street, so. As long as he's biting by that, I, I don't know that, I mean, yeah, I think there was a concern about the practicality of it, but again, it's our, our job to say, is that within our ordinance to allow that usage, and how he maintains it really is his responsibility, Any other comments on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I really don't think it's necessary to restrict, put all these restrictions, that it's got to be licensed and this and that. We didn't do that. Perkins has got outside of storage over here, he's got equipment outside, he's got piles of dirt outside, he can go all around the commercial park they do. So, why, all of a sudden, we're starting to pick on these last ones that are coming through? As long as it's green, and it's not hazardous.
I think, I think the, well, I know the discussion, it was germane to these two businesses, was it's ins and out to their business. It's not what the business is there for, where A&amp;B Welding is storing things that are, are part of their business, and I think you're going to see that at the other places here. They're not storing other people's vehicles typically, they're storing things that are germane to their business.
That you know of.
That we know, yeah. That we can, that we can tell from driving by. I don't, I don't think it's, it's an unreasonable burden, and, and again, because it is storage of other people's items, I think it does make it easier to maintain it and, and keep it in, in control. I think that the more specific an IUP is, the, the more specific the upholding it and enforcing it if it's not upheld, and there's no question later what, what we were thinking, so. Any other comments?
I do agree with Councilman Bettinger, is we, we have to look at what we've done in the past, and now start pigeonholing others, you know, into tighter constraints, you know, is, you know, I don't know, it could get us in hot water, because obviously, they can go back and say, well, you've done it here, there, and everywhere else, so why are you making it? But I don't have an issue if the property owner is willing to agree to more tighter stringent requirements that we, we can ask, but again, because of what we've done in the past, I think we, legally, we have a hard time going back and saying, you know, you have to meet this now.
Well, I, I don't know that, you know, in the past, again, the, the type of properties we have here, the outdoor storage is their business, whether it's concrete business or environmental business, it's, I, I guess I don't know that we've allowed outdoor storage. That was the concern when we first had outdoor storage, and you didn't have a main building on the property. Maybe just take whatever junk you got around the house and put it out there. And so, that's when we said, at least it had to be germane to the business. When A&amp;B wanted their separate parcel, that came up years ago, back when we were a township. You know, if they're going to store things, at least it had to be business stuff, so we didn't, you know, we didn't have somebody who has a carnival at home, decides, I'm just going to go put something on an empty lot up in the, in the city there, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I, I believe that the council has the right on, whether it be an IUP or CUP or home occupying business, to set the parameters of that, and as long as the, the requirements are not violating any type of ordinance or statute or law, the council has the ability to determine whether or not they want to impose, in this case would be the licensed and operable, part, part of that. It will help enforcement down the road if indeed there would be a, a violation. It, it does allow our staff to enforce that, and I think if you look at IUPs and CUPs throughout the city, there are not two that are the exact same, because each one is, is different in its own and has a cause for different stipulations. And I believe Ms. Stockman spoke to that at the planning and zoning meeting, and at the meeting we had the end of August for the council, is that you have the right to deny or approve outdoor storage and the conditions of that outdoor storage.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I would concur with that. I think that the conditions can be tailored to the individual businesses, and that Attorney Rupee would find that acceptable, and that's part of the reason why that process was adopted, so that you can look at each individual use and what they're storing, and then determine how you want it addressed. So, as long as it's relating to what he's doing, so he, you know, if he is typically storing vehicles for people, then I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that they're be licensed and operable.
Can we?
So, I guess I just have a whole question about potential scenarios. So, let's just say it's a nice house, you know what I mean, but it may be built on trailer, you know what I mean, and they don't keep, I was, you know, trying to throw some different possibilities. But I can, I envision myself storing boats, RVs, cars, trucks, and, you know, maybe someone else, I doubt since you want to place one of those out there, but, you know, I don't know, can you all, seem like there'd be an issue?
The issue that, that question came up on the tiny homes a lot, and it was basically, they were keeping, he's going to keep them on the trailer.
Yeah.
So, if the boat's on the trailer, that's mobile. I see that as compliance.
Storing like pallets of miscellaneous building supplies or random things, and I think that, you know, that's what Mr. Bettinger's, you know, alluding to to some extent, like, you know, how you dictate what you can and can't store, but I mean, I don't really, I would never let someone store that there, so ultimately, I don't, I don't think, I don't have any homes or any issues with the stipulation being licensed and operable.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? So, as far as the, the other expectations, the, we've got the gate information, fire department comments, the architectural views, and the maintenance agreement as revised by the attorney. Anything else that the council would need to see?
I don't have any questions in regards to architectural view, the gate orientation and operation, the distance between the gate and the road.
What was the, the distance between the gate and the road?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet? That's from the curb to the gate?
Yeah.
Looks like it's good, then. So, we'll vote on Tuesday.
Mr. Mayor, just one question.
Yes.
Would it be okay, or I guess I would recommend that we go back to the original draft findings, which had the CUP and IUP separate conditions for both, because there's different, for instance, to revoke a CUP is different than revoking an IUP, or that kind of thing. So, I had them listed separately the first time, otherwise...
I think it would make sense to list them separately, and then, again, the, the recommendation from the P&amp;Z was to not have the outdoor storage, so, to put the specific language in for the outdoor storage.
Right.
That would be under the IUP.
I would have to, right, add that back in, yes.
I think, you know, if the council agrees, that have the CUP and the IUP separate, and have it clearly defined. And then, provide Mr. Peterson with that, and say if you have any questions, get it to us before Tuesday. Anything else on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
On the revised stormwater maintenance agreement, just a clerical, page B1, number one at the bottom, the one, the second sentence, starting the applicant...
Advocate AOR?
Yeah, and/or, I would assume it should be.
Have that Cory, or Liz, or whoever, who would take care of it?
Okay, refresh me, okay.
B1.
Oh, okay.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. You're welcome to stay around if you like, we're done with you, so. We're going to talk about comp plan and then code enforcement. I said I thought that would have been enticing, too. All right, Planner Stockman, you want to take the lead here and tell us what you're
I'm thinking we should have a meeting or two, well, we for sure need one meeting if it's not done this evening. I need direction on what and if, are there going to be any changes to the land use plan. In other words, are we going to add that 80 acres back in anywhere, the commercial industrial that we removed for the in parcel? Or, just generally speaking, because our industrial park is now nearing capacity, do we want to add industrials on land? We, of course, do have some on the east side of town, but those property owners are not ready to give up their farming activities. So, the main thing is the land use plan, guidance there, and then also, when we update the comp plan, we will be incorporating the frontage road plan that was approved previously. So, then the question remains, do we want to keep those remaining seven quadrants in the plan as they are? Do we want to change those in any way? But those would be part of our transportation section, you know, without the number two that was recently removed. And then, so as far as meetings go, you could make the call if you want to actually talk about anything specifically tonight, or if we should schedule sort of a work session just for the comp plan and any of those changes I just mentioned. And then, I would recommend having two open houses, one more at the beginning here, when we do get our draft land use plan put together, and get comments from people, and a, kind of with the frame of mind that the land use plan could still change after that point. And then, later, have another meeting right before final adoption, or, or before submission to Met Council to get comments on the entire plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I, I think it calls for a meeting to just specifically talk about the comp plan, and as a council, where do we want to see the city going, and it's the purpose of this, and I think we should have that one agenda item on, for a meeting, and have that discussion prior to, at that point, we could also look at then scheduling open house, the open house.
Yeah, I think it would, would make sense to have the council get together with Liz to determine overall scope of the, the comp plan before we, we present the draft plan
The other thing, too, is I believe the Met Council is willing to come out, whether it be during that meeting, or I know sometimes they'll come out and be part of the public meeting if we want them to be.
What do you perceive the value of that to be? Is there something particular they want to communicate, or?
Well, here's one issue that has come up, and it's, I'm, I'm in the process of dealing with it, but when the MUSA was removed, which was very clear that it... with it, but when the MUSA was removed, which was very clear that it was, they, their intention was to leave that area at the same development density, so a four per 40 instead of eight per 40. And I said, well, that doesn't make any sense at all. I said, why wouldn't we go back? We were at our rural residential density, which is one per five. And he had quoted one per two and a half, and I said, well, no, the overall is one per, or eight per 40. So I said, no, they're not going to go for that. I said, that doesn't make any sense to me. If you're not planning to bring sewer and water up here, why would you limit our, our capacity to split and whatnot? I said, what's the process for, you know, removing that? Because they call it diversified rural. So they call the rest of the city rural residential, or permanent rural, and then they call this diversified rural. And, but yet you have cities like Ham Lake, which are smaller lot sizes, and they're all rural. So I, you know, and then they're surrounded by sewer and water. So I really am baffled as to what their intent is. So what you can do is, or what my intention is, you have to request that be changed, and that can be part of your comp plan, but you have to really go through sort of the set of reasons why and what your justification is. So I was speaking with that Eric Wochek, who's our council rep for this area, and the intent is then, I'm going to prepare this report kind of first thing and try to get this taken care of, and so he knows what, you know, what we're going to do, and then see what he thinks, but it just makes no sense to me. I mean, we were all the same before they made us do the MUSA, and, and now, you know, they're saying, well, it's in opposition to our overall scheme to expand the rural residential. Well, we're not expanding anything, that's what we were, you know, so it's just a headache that they're dealing with that way. So anyway, it's not over till it's over, but, and they suggest all these things like, I forget what they call it, well, sort of innovative ways to develop or allow these four per 40, or one per, the 10 acre lot size, and I look up what they showed as a suggestion, and it was just like the RASP, just like the Rural Open Space Preservation that we, you know, had hearings for. And I said, that wasn't, you know, that didn't go through either, the residents didn't want that. So I'm trying to show, and I really want to show, too, graphically, the, in the past 10 years, there is very little that's changed over there as far as any new development. No, I can't even think of a subdivision over there since, at least I've been here. And that's gone on seven years, so it's, it doesn't make sense to me. But that's the main, the only hiccup that I can see right now. But nonetheless, we do need, yeah, the meeting to talk about everything. So if need be, he can come and be part of that whenever it is.
How much you got in 2.2 here on your, your plan update?
2.2?
On your schedule here?
Oh.
I have 2.2, the Thrive community designations?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I've been to some of the local government officials' meetings when Met councils come and talk about Thrive for 2040, and most of what I've heard there is not something that would be embraced by Now Then residents.
Mm-hmm.
How much of that might they be trying to impose upon us, or is this something where, here's some ideas, you can incorporate them if you wish, or we'll impose these upon you, or?
Well, those have already...
How rigid do you see them with Thrive initiatives?
Well, the Thrive's already been determined, and that's what I'm speaking of, so they basically have these categories, and Now Then's already, all the communities have been designated, pre, you know, previously. So we are just mostly the rural residential, and then is what they call diversified rural. So, yeah, I don't see any real benefit to having...
But any other aspects of the Thrive initiative that we should be concerned with? Or that they might, beyond the diversified rural?
Hmm, I don't, I can't think of any right now. I can look at it in a little more depth, and then we could make that part of our conversation when we, at our first meeting.
Are you, have you initiated any of these items at this point, beyond the discussion with the Met Council?
Just inventory, just getting the land use, existing land use, and getting, trying to get some of the maps updated, which aren't real extensive, but some of the, you know, tables and things like that in the inventory.
Councilmember Rainville, you were talking about this initial meeting to address the council's take on some of these things. Are you specifically looking to address items in section three?
Yes.
And then, and a timetable for public meetings?
Yes.
Is that consistent with what the council would like to see?
So you mean policies?
Yeah.
Well, land, land use map, yeah. The policies are more written.
Yeah, but I think, you know, so my interpretation of it would be, take a look at our 2030 plan and say, here's our existing policies, do we see any significant changes to these? So that we're giving you direction, saying we want to keep going this way, or these ones should be adjusted this way in the draft plan. So I think it's beneficial for the council, take a look at what we have and guide you as to what we want.
Okay. No, I like that idea.
Representing the citizens.
I was thinking the opposite way, of looking at the map first, but it probably does make more sense doing it that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I think it's important that, that the council give you direction as to what we would like to see in our eyes and what our constituents or residents have told us, as far as what they would like to see the city look like in the future, versus you coming back and saying, this is what we should do. I think that puts the cart before the horse, and we, the council should have the input first, so that we're all on the same page going forward, or as much as we can be on the same page going forward.
And I think it seems to make sense to take inventory and update, you know, the maps, the assessment of regional, national, demographic, economic, and environmental transition opportunities, certainly for you to have some of that information to present to us, saying, here's some background, and here's the existing plan. With this as background, where you, where do you think we want to see Now Then going in the next 10 years?
Mm-hmm.
Or during this next plan update, so.
Right.
Because I think we want to have that before we sit down with, with too much more information to say, you know, certainly want to take input from the residents, but if it's, it's too broad and we haven't got any direction, any guidance to where we were and what we're thinking, I think we want to have some guidance when we start open houses, so.
Right. We have to see the trends in the last 10 years and that kind of thing, see if the changes, but...
I think the invitation, by the way, you know, in the newsletter to residents, to bring pictures of what they perceive is best about Now Then, and how they'd like to see it, and what works and what doesn't work, I think that's a good opportunity. Hopefully, people avail themselves of that.
I do, too. I hope some people embrace that.
Any other comments from the council at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan? I'm, being new to this, I guess I would rather have some extra time to, you know, focus on it, where we can discuss it more than just during the workshop, and kind of determine what we do and don't want to do, and then go from there.
You're saying that to have a meeting dedicated to that?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
Would, I'm guessing that you, would you think that would be joint with P and Z, or not?
I would say initially, no.
Okay.
It'd be my take, I don't know, council weigh in, but...
I think they should be invited, and if they want to come, they should know that we're having it.
Oh, it'll be an open meeting, I mean, it'll be open.
Right, but I think there should be a notice sent out to them that we're having a meeting on this date to discuss our comp plan.
Oh, I don't disagree, I just, I want to make sure that it stays focused, and, you know, at least, because it's, it's a, you know, preparation of a draft, I think it's, it'll be an open meeting anyway, but... Other comments? At this point, do we want to determine what might be the best time for something like that?
I don't have a calendar to look at, so.
Did you not get your phone back yet?
No, hopefully, I was hoping to get it today, but not today.
Did you lose everything that was in it?
Yep, totally fried.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
They think it was a bad charger, so, both my wife and I at the same time, so. Frasier lease was under warranty, but mine wasn't.
You know, a guy at work was canoeing up north, and he said, I'm just so used to having it in my pocket. He went in, he realized he's got about 8,000 pictures on that, well, he had about 8,000 pictures on it, and now he's got a phone he doesn't know how to use, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To Ms. Stockman, so the work that you need to do on number two, some of that you have in, you know, by, between September and December of this year, what do you think would be a, a time period where you would be ready to meet with us, having this inventory, and then to have the discussion with us? Would you think November, October, November would...
Yeah, I would say end of October, early November. We don't want to get too close, well, I guess if that's just our meeting, then we could wait till after the holidays to have any public meeting. But yeah, that would work for me. I mean, I could get you the policies any time to start perusing.
So how do we do that? We get the policy that we can start looking through, you, you set up a timetable that reasonable for you to get the preliminary work done, and then we'll establish a joint meeting, and we can all put our schedules to... You can recommend when you think you might be ready, and we'll give our available dates to Cory.
Yeah, let's focus on, yeah, end of October, first week in November, first couple weeks, I guess.
All right.
And then I have one other question for Ms. Stockman.
Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
This issue with the Met Council, have, have they, and I don't remember everything in the letter they sent us, that we were being, they were taking us out of the MUSA area, have we received any type of documentation from there, from them, that addressed this?
They, they are doing everything online, and they did when they issued their Thrive. It's, it was kind of like a book, they, well, they did have one document that was pub, they basically published, but most of their stuff's online, so when they, and they just recently asked us as a city to update their land use map, so they sent us a big map, and I had to go through and correct things. But I'd say it was probably close to a year ago that they came out with these designations, but I never even looked close enough to see what they were, so, you know, but they have, their part of it has been out for quite some time.
And they also have that one for the council. So at this point, Liz, you'll do the background work, give us an expected window, and then we can set up a meeting to talk about items three, items under three there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Thing is, we wouldn't be scheduling that meeting on Tuesday. Is there something else we can pull from the agenda, then? We've given Ms. Stockman her direction, and...
Counsel, okay with that?
While Ms. Paul gets his phone back, and we want to come up with a date for that meeting now before we...
I think that Liz has to tell us when she can...
Well, I'm okay with just giving you, you know, a couple of week window or something.
Yes, that far out, I know. The only, only thing I know, I know the November 13th through 17th week, I know I'm not around that week. But other than that, I can probably work around.
Yeah, the beginning of the week, like Monday through Wednesdays are better for me. There's a couple of weekends there that I'm leaving on a Thursday in November, but...
Hey, we had a fifth Tuesday in October, but that's Halloween, so.
Oh, yeah.
You'd have to fight through the trunk of treaters out here now.
I was just going to say, now, I must have young kids, so...
No, no, the parking lot called a trunk of treaters.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We have one junior over here.
Youngest is six years old.
Oh, yeah, he has to go.
I had to plan my elk trip to Wyoming around Halloween, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, then if, if we feel we can schedule that, then leave it on the count, the agenda.
What month was your trip, Paul?
Uh, November 13th through 17th, I believe.
So when were you posted?
That's the only one I have.
We'll have to wait for Paul to get his calendar together.
Yeah, that's the one I have scheduled right now. That I know for sure.
So generally, yeah, first or second week in November.
So you can just move that to a council item, I think, and then we'll pick a date, so.
Do you want it moved to under council items?
Yep.
Okay. And then I'll take off the discussion of land use plan, but...
Yep.
And then Cory, can you verify, so Tuesday, November 7th is an election? I don't know if there's anything out here.
Yeah.
Or some municipal school, so we couldn't do it on that night, so.
Not until that's right.
And that, for the park and rec also, but they won't be able to meet that night.
It's hard. Council meeting is the 14th that month.
Correct. Should we then...
And we can't do anything on the 10th, because that's on Veterans Day celebrated, right?
It's a holiday.
Considered a holiday.
Yeah.
On the 10th, are we looking at November again?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't do it on Friday, anyway.
On Friday night.
Oh, come on.
I'm out of town.
Adult beverages.
Yeah, didn't Liz just say the beginning of the week works best for her?
All right, we'll take a look at our calendars there.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And, and just something, in looking at the calendar now, typically, oh, yeah, never mind, never mind, I'm looking wrong.
I think it was on 2/30, too.
Yep.
I know I'll be around that day.
You say you will?
I will. I know I'll be around that day.
For a week for Halloween?
Nope. Carving pumpkins, maybe, but... Nope, carbon pumpkins maybe, but.
All right, good to go on that one? A little off schedule here. Code enforcements.
Okay.
We've been busy.
Busy, busy this month. Uh, just a couple of comments on the chart. Uh, the Dan Larsen, or excuse me, the John Larson property on Cleary Road, it's the third one from the top on the first page. That one's concerning to me, but I do believe I need to get out there with the sheriff again. There's been no response from him at all. I feel like I need to see it or want to see it, and that, you know, previously it was the living in the RVs out there. And it was real obvious that he had, once again, kind of opened up the property, it had been closed down and gated for quite some time. And he wouldn't answer his door, he lives at his mother's house on Jasper, tried to talk to him, his phone's either disconnected or changed. So that's been a tough one.
That one adjacent to our town?
Yes. And then Dan Larson on Jasper. That's just an unbelievable mess, I, I drove in there a couple of weeks ago and just about fell over, I mean, it's, it's gone the wrong way. So I did make phone contact with the guy, and told him I needed progress in two weeks, and he actually gave it to me and sent me some pictures, and he had a trailer that he hauled out of there. He does the, you know, HVAC stuff and water heaters and whatever, all sitting around, the stuff that he takes out of people's houses. So, at any rate, I did get a little action there in the last week. So that one's slow going, but try to go the right way here.
Are these Larsons related?
They are not. And then this Dave property.
Let's just go back to the, the Larson Boyham. Are you asking the council to guide you in that, or are you just going to call the sheriff?
Well, that's my feeling, is that I just need to see it, if there's nothing out there and I'm totally wrong, then I guess, you know, it's one of these cases where you can't really see it from the road, there's a lot of stuff still back there. A lot of inoperable cars and bigger vehicles, junk piles, rusting, whatever. There's a couple of smaller, like sheds full of stuff, and previously they had a couple RVs with people living in them, and that, the residing portion was taken care of at that time. But then, when the sheriff was out there previously, he had indicated that he knows them well, and there was continual calls to him and the property, so, at any rate. I don't know, that's kind of my feeling, is that maybe I should see what's out there now, it's been almost two years since we were out there. Otherwise, if you feel like you just want to not worry about it, but, you know, he's not in compliance for a property without a structure, that was the whole thing, he really, and.
And that's the one where you, you did go out there, though, and the people were living in the trailer and, and were known to the authorities?
Yes. Yep, there was a list a mile long of violations on. And I guess this Kathy Boyham, she's called me several times because they own the property jointly, but he refuses to sell, so she's basically, you know, lost her investment in it. Which of course isn't our issue, but I, you know, was just updating her as to what had been done, but I told her to get an attorney. That's about all I could recommend, but, so it's a unique situation. That's about all I know. The property that he lives in on Jasper now was, you know, fairly well-maintained, and there, you know, there wasn't junk accumulating over there, so that's good, I guess.
All right, anything else that you want to bring up here that?
Uh, this Dave property on one ninety-ninth is right next to Burns Auto. They, James is the father, and he, his two sons, Michael and Eric, own it, Eric lives there with him, or, excuse me, Michael lives there with him, I met Mike there yesterday. James had a real collection of vehicles. He's got a couple trailers full of Harley Davidson stuff, and at any rate, he's gotten, they did get rid of ten or eleven vehicles this summer, so that was great. They still have probably, let's see, six, seven, eight, eight or nine that are outside, a couple of them are boats. One's an RV they're trying to get rid of, and anyway, there's progress, you can't see this one from the road, and it is, you know, that cul-de-sac over there. They did do some structural improvements to the deck, the deck was previously supported by a wall that was crumbling, it's a, it was a block, or is a block wall. So they put some supportive posts under the deck to solve the problem that Andy had noticed. Andy checked it out yesterday as well, and he was fine with it, so if we, if you're comfortable with removing this one, I think I am, we could do that, we've done that with a couple that have. You know, it was, they did get a dumpster in there. It's, it's somewhat of a money issue, too, to, you know, get another dumpster and get rid of these things.
Is this one that was concerning to some of the people that lived in the cul-de-sac, though the property abutted them, and there was storage against that? Whether it was on the property line or not, or?
I don't recall that it surfaced that way, I think Andy had initially gone out there for like a new furnace, or a, just something really routine, and just had said, you know, hey, this is, this is on issue. But that was long before that, you know, we had our policy that we had to have a, a written complaint. So I do think this one was staff-oriented, or staff-initiated, rather, quite some time ago. James was dragging his feet, it's actually the kids that were helping, I don't think James is in very good health. Anyway, so it's kind of whatever you, whatever you think on that one, we could just. I don't think they'll do any more of this.
So my question is, how would it compare to, you know, like a Gary Scott that we spent so much time and money on?
Well, right, I mean, and what was the other one up on, the guy that collected tractors, and we said because we couldn't see it from the road, and he was, you know, he had done some other cleanup that we had asked, you know, I think when they cooperate and they make some progress, I mean, is he truly in compliance? No, he's not. And sometimes with a lot of these older ones, or even older people, you're not going to get compliance until they pass away sometimes.
Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
Well, we need to talk about Mr. Guyer. And that's a tough one, I have not spoken to Mr. Guyer, I didn't want to upset him again before I spoke to you, knowing how you motioned last time. Is, it was hard for me, I struggle with this one a lot. I, you know, didn't necessarily agree with the way you motioned the first time, but, I mean, that's your prerogative, and Attorney Rupi did state that, you know, you may choose as a council not to enforce certain things. But lately, the concern has been a couple of things with him, he, he has regulated animals, which are the, you know, the bear, the fox. The animals native to Minnesota, that he is able to breed and sell. He recently sold two fox babies, I don't know, are they kits, are they, I don't know what the proper term is for baby fox. Sold them to another northern resident. So, and yes, okay, is it really the, it's not really the seller's problem, or, or, you know, job to inform these buyers that these animals are not allowed in now then, and, and they're supposed to, as an owner, contact the DNR to get the proper paperwork for, to have those regulated animals. But anyway, it's kind of proliferating the problem, how do you have Tommy that would be, if you allow him to keep things, and then tell people, other people, that they can't? So when these fox were purchased, they're, they brought them apparently into city offices to show staff, I wasn't there, and said that they had been ill, the animals had been ill. At any rate, so Cory had called Keith Straff, the Humane Society, and just asked him some questions. And he wasn't as concerned about those as he was the skunk. The skunk is what, very prone to rabies?
And can't be around any public at all.
And shouldn't be around public, so that was one thing, but, at any rate, we need to address the complaint, and how you want to handle it this time, I mean, he, there's no question that he has too many animals on the property. Yes, probably what he's doing, some of it may have been grandfathered in, we adopted our exotic and regulated animal ordinance in about two thousand and seven. When the state initiated that ordinance or statute, their direction was that anybody with the regulated animals had to prove that they had that animal in their possession as of January of two thousand and five, and show vet records and all these things, so it was quite a process. I, you know, we don't, I don't know any of it, I don't know, I have no idea what, you know, the rest of your knowledge is on it, but there's nothing, no records of, that I've seen, except he does, you know, he did show me his DNR permits for the past few years, he's been, been legal, but like, if you look at the aerial photographs, the bear enclosure was not there in two thousand and twelve. So there's some questionable things, I know he's a good guy, I know he comes to your activities. So basically, I'm just real torn on it, I didn't act on it until I brought it, brought it before you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
You can correct, or somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the reason we kind of chose to receive and file the, the first complaint was because it was a, a non-northern resident who filed the complaint. This appears to be different, so I think we need.
Two things, I think, non-resident was one thing, there, I think there's people trolling the internet, looking
Yeah.
for things like this, and the other part was, I think, the USDA, DNR, we didn't necessarily want to become the enforcement, pay Liz to enforce their regulations, if it's concerning enough to them, let them do it. I think there's three complaints here, the first one, I would still say, if it's USDA's got an issue, they should deal with that, we shouldn't have to pay for that. The IUP and the number of animals on the property, that's a different issue, in my opinion, but not to cut you off, but just.
Well, and again, that, that comes to that point, though, still, is, part of the initial was because where the complaint was originated from, looks like this is a different complaint altogether. And, you know, and again, I, I do agree that, you know, the DNR should be involved, obviously, you know, USDA should be involved, but we should not, other than direct them or suggest, or point it out to them, but again, we get down to the condition of the IUP, which is a concern, and based on the number of animals, you know, and I, what the IUP states, he is in violations, we did have.
I don't think he has an IUP, does he?
No, he has no IUP, so what you're seeing is the ordinance.
Oh, well, okay, the ordinance, but still he's in violation.
That's the third one, is the number of animals on the.
You know, and, and I do recall, and again, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but we, there was another gentleman years ago who had exotic pets, and basically the city made him get rid of all those. You know, so, you know, what's the difference here, you know?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Flair Stockman.
I do know of other properties at the present time that have exotics, or, and/or regulated, so he's not alone. And the USDA, I agree, it's not our job to enforce USDA rules, but I think we do too, need to respect and work together with these agencies. We do it in a lot of other regards, just like how we adopted the DNR wetland regs and shoreline regs, we had an incident where we a couple properties that were required, even in their IUPs, to comply with MPCA rules, those kinds of things, so, not necessarily animal-related, but coordinating with other agencies.
I, I would think if, if he had a request for an IUP, that would be germane at that point, like, somebody's coming in for an IUP and was saying you need to abide by county, state
Such and such, yeah.
federal regulations.
Yeah.
You know, our, our limitation on the USDA part is, we never required an IUP on that, and so we, again, doing their, their work for them, if it's part of the IUP, I, I then understand that.
But if somebody was coming in new for an IUP for this type of business, that would probably be some of the conditions put on that IUP, is that he has these licenses.
Oh, I, I think, that's, that's my point, that, that, you know, when it came up before, does he want to apply for an IUP? He was deciding whether just to put the business out, you know, go out of business on it, not worry about the IUP. You know, if we, if we require an IUP, then that's germane, you know, if you want to stay in business, you have to comply with the applicable regulations. I do know that, you know, I, I know that this supposedly came from northern resident.
Yeah.
I've been getting calls from mayors of other cities, somebody's following, I think, not just him around, but people that have these types of zoos, and they're doing this in every city, because I'm getting calls from other mayors, saying, did you know what's going on in your city, and who this person is, and, and how they got that information, and said, okay, somebody's finding these guys and, and hounding them in each city, so. You know, this may not be that person, but it just happens to be this particular business has been brought up in other cities, and in the county, and, and I've gotten calls from those people saying.
Okay.
You know, people are concerned.
Okay. Well, what, I mean, one concern that I was told. Well, what, I mean, one concern that I was told, and I don't know for a fact this is true, but if the, you know, traveling zoo, which he's referred to, and I'm sure because he's a smaller time person is why they haven't enforced it. But if a person like him doesn't have a USDA license and he comes to a festival or whatever, you would become the responsible party if something happens. And, I mean, I would hate to see-
That's what's being said to all the other mayors.
It was? Well, I heard this from the, not from this complaintant, but the, somebody that knew the USDA. I think it was the, I'd have to look it up, but it was a government agency. It wasn't part of the complaint.
Yeah, I think that's, that's why some of the, these types, and probably this gentleman in particular, are cutting back on the zoo part of it. Basically getting down to horse rides and things at this point.
Well, yeah, more farm animal type stuff would be less threatening.
That, that's my understanding. A lot of them are cutting back. Well, it's, it's two things. It's that regulation and it's also the disease issues with petting zoos. There's a liability, I think, of getting expensive for them to, which is a separate issue. I, I think, you know, going back to the complaint, I, you know, I think the USDA isn't our concern until we require an IUP. And at that point, if he wants to apply for an IUP, then we put conditions on the IUP. And the number of animals, you know, that's an ordinance thing. That's independent of IUP. That has to do with which property you have and what are you going to keep there. That's, that's ordinance.
Which he is in violation of?
From these numbers, yes. So, you know, but I think from a council standpoint, you know, we can, we can guide Liz to recommend that he comply with the ordinance, as everybody else would. If he's going to be running a business from his property, it requires, home-based business requires an IUP with conditions. And let him decide if he wants to pursue that or not. If he doesn't want to, then he's got to get rid of the animals. If he wants to, then he's got to abide by the conditions. The USDA and those other things, and regarding other exotics in the city. Don't get complaints on the other exotics. Remind people and, you know, on the website, that if you got exotics, here's the conditions by which you can have them. Here's the ones you can't.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Recker.
I do recall that we were, that this did come up before and he was, and Mr. Guyer was, was deciding whether or not he wanted to continue or not. And that we did say, if you're going to continue this as a business, you did need to get an IUP in. And I think it's, he was also talking about getting rid of some animals because they were, he, he was getting older or older and just didn't know if he, didn't, didn't, wasn't sure if he wanted to continue doing it or not. So, but it seems like he's continuing to do it right now, so.
Well, I'll wait for direction and formal motion. I don't think it was, there was any, I think IUPs were discussed briefly last time, but I don't think it was a part of the motion. Well, I know, but yeah, you're right. I think he did say his age and other factors were-
I think, you know, the simple, the simple way would probably be to say, you've got too many animals according to ordinance, and you'd have to an IUP to run the business. And give him a chance to say, I want to do that or I don't.
Just think about it, yeah, right.
I mean, as far as, we put it to him that way, and then if he says, I want to do it, then we go through the IUP process. He says, no, then shut her down.
Yeah.
Have him shut it down. Does that seem to make sense? Put it to him, you have to have an IUP and a proper amount of animals, and the IUP will have conditions.
So do we need to add this agenda to give Liz direction on them two items that she was requesting? The Jim Day and with the day property and Thomas Petting Zoo?
Which ones did you say?
The day she was talking about moving it.
Okay, Jim Day and this one?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think I'd keep Day on there for now, just see if he continues to clean up, see if the sun's-
Yeah, I mean, it might be another nine to 12 months to get some more action out of him with, you know-
And looking at what's on here, I'd just say, might as well.
Yeah, it's not going to hurt.
I don't know, I mean, do we, do we need to? Liz is asking for direction. We just say, keep Day on there for now and, and talk to Tommy about IUP and number of animals.
I think really it should be on the council agenda, because this is not a meeting where we can make decisions. Unless we want to start making, posting this and making council decisions at these meetings.
May I have a meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to state that I didn't witness the boxes. It was two other staff members. These, this couple brought them in, and they were concerned, the staff members as well, going, wait a minute. Why are they bringing these foxes in to show us, for one thing? And they did indicate they were northern residents, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Recker.
Should we then put this, the direction for Day, actually, it's just Tommy's, under council item?
I think so.
I think both of the properties that she asked for direction.
The day property, direction was going to be to take it off. Do we just say we're going to leave it on?
I think that decision should be made at the council meeting.
Okay.
Because we're not, we can't make decisions tonight.
If you-
Well, if we just leave it on, we're not really making a decision.
We're not making a decision. She's just leaving it on. The decision would be if, to take it off and move it to somewhere else. But we're not, we're not addressing any other actions on there. The specific one that needs action is, you know, we have a complaint. And she needs action. Where do I go with it? How much do I pursue? That seems to be clear. The other one is, it's just staying as it.
So you're making the decision for the rest of the council. She asked for direction from the, the council and-
No, she, she made a suggestion that we could just drop it. If we want to, we can do it with other things.
Maybe I want to discuss it. Maybe, maybe I feel different than you.
Well, this is the time to say that.
And that should be a council decision at a council meeting. And this is not the place, right? We have done it in the past when we shouldn't be. That should be done at a regular council meeting.
What I could do, Mr. Mayor, is provide the photos I took and help you decide on Tuesday.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Recker.
Under planning and zoning letter D, can we change that to code enforcement actions? And give direction at that, at that point, rather than moving it to council items?
Code enforcement actions or direction or? Say, direction, maybe.
Direction. Should we also include in there, one of the items Liz mentioned was the sheriff escort to the 210 query at John Larson? Do you make a clear direction for that also?
All right. Anything else, Liz?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right. Park and Rec.
Mr. Mayor, at the last Park and Rec Committee meeting, it was brought up that there were complaints about smoking at Twin Lakes and the debris and the, from cigarette butts and such, and just the, that, that people don't like the smoking that, that's occurring. And there was discussion as far as making the parks and then the area around the recreational rinks as non-smoking. At the time, all there was, was discussion. There was no, none of this additional information was at the meeting. That all came, I think Chair Harilla looked all that up after the fact. Because the committee had asked that we have a ordinance change to do non-smoking in the parks. Based on what Chair Harilla has put forward, it looks like we can just do policy change. I, I would like to direct this back to the Park and Rec Committee so that they have the ability to, to discuss all of this information and then bring forward their thoughts on it.
Mr. Mayor, can I just agree with one thing? Is, it isn't more than just a policy change. Parking rec regulations are in our ordinance.
Okay, so it's still-
But talking to Liz, we do not have to go to public hearing.
Okay.
But it does still have to be changed, the language, so.
So I think there, there needs to be more work done on it. You know, how are we going to do it? What is, what is entailed in doing it? The, the educational piece that we do with our residents, with the understanding that this is something that isn't enforceable, so it's an honor system. And, and that needs to be explained well to the residents, that it, it is an honor system.
You'd have to explain it to our employees, too.
Yes, yeah.
Your recommendation at this point is to send it back, now that there's additional information that wasn't discussed, send it back to Park and Rec to flesh it out and come up with an actual proposal or recommendation?
Yes.
Any other comments on that? All right. Well, when, when you do that, I think you need to make sure that they're very specific about where they're talking. You know, is, is the parking lot part of that? Is this parking lot part of that? People come out of this building, are they considered on parkland or? So they need to have clear delineation as well.
Okay.
Is it the parking lot at, at the beach or just the beach and picnic area? You know, is it once you drive off of, of the road into the park?
Okay. Okay.
All right. Consent agenda. Anybody got any questions there?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Recker.
Hi, just on the, on item 1.6. I know that we had talked about going down in the number of terminals, which then changed the initial bid that they provided. I would just like to see what those terminal numbers is and the actual dollar amount that we would be approving.
I'd like to see the, the actual dollar amount. And then typically, when I've been talking to administrators from other cities, when we actually do spend the money, the RCA is good, but then it should come in a form of a resolution to be attached. Whenever we spend tax dollars, it should, should come in a form of resolution, which would be the supporting documents attached to the RCA. I think both that for that and the redo of the cement work. I think it applies. What would be the total amount we estimate for the cement work on the next RCA 1.7? And then attach a resolution for the spending. That's an actual estimate, huh?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Recker.
I have a question on 1, on 1.7. So the, the 475, and, and this goes back to my years of bidding concrete jobs. Is this 475 still valid if, if by chance that's the only thing we do? If we don't do the, the entire package of the rink and the warming house? Okay. Because I, I just know of short loads and things like that. We had minimums in, for small jobs, and there were way more than 475. So just so that we know that that's valid for-
Well, if they just do that, they're going to mix their own. They're not going to get a truck in for that.
I, I don't know what they're going to do. That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Recker.
I do have a question back to the, to 1.6. Have we ever had anybody else give us a bid on that, Cory? Is it worthwhile doing? Or have we used them long enough or?
Yeah, we've used them for, they've been, our IT people since they're bright. And I believe he originated from the county and left there and opened his own business. And he has, I believe, employs two other now county employees over there that love the county.
We certainly could do it. I know from talking again with some of the other cities that contract out and some of our experiences of work with contracting out, he's pretty good and his prices seem pretty reasonable. But if we wanted to get comparative, what I, what I think he's, he's certainly done well by us. And I'm just comparing services and prices with some of the other people I know, but.
Right. And the question asked, we, you know, typically, you know, require, you know, for everything else we do, we want to get multiple bids, so.
Right. Mr. Mayor, this is also, their service contract is up this month, just to keep aware of that. And it's not like a bid, like where we generally go out for a large project where we're getting a bunch of, it's a, just a service contract, just like with generators, every year-
Yeah.
We contract with a generator company to come out and service it. I mean, if you want us to go out for bids for just things like that, too.
Just then.
But, you know, it's worth to just check on to it. And maybe that's something for consideration when we know we're getting close to-
Yeah.
The time when a service is going to come up again.
Obviously, now would be a little late to do, but it'd be just for curiosity thing, you know, are we-
Right. In my understanding, and I'll double check on the amount, but my understanding, it went up like $60.
After the cuts of the-
Yeah, it was very minimal, yeah.
Okay.
But we can do that in future.
I want to mention, too, item 1.5. Proclamation for Constitutional Week starting September 17th. I would actually like to read that proclamation if nobody has a concern. I just think it's a- The proclamation does have one type on it. 20th of August.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Recker.
If that's something you wanted to read, pull out and read, do you want to-
If that's something you wanted to read, pull out and read, do you wanna, do we wanna move that to council items then?
Uh, we certainly can, yes.
Well, you could read it as part of the discussion when we're approving items, or?
Yeah, I think.
Just do that.
I think I will. Yeah, what's that?
They're framers. They've built it.
Is it a framer?
They've built it.
Okay. I hadn't heard it used that way. Would you wanna do that? Just reading this part of, before the discussion?
Before the, where were you saying?
We have a motion and second to approve the council, or the consent agenda, and then during discussion they could read that.
Anything else on there?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one note was the, in the council minutes, the motion for the tiny houses was just to approve the temporary storage before the actual IUP was approved.
The original council meeting.
The original council meeting, last month's council meeting.
August.
Yeah.
Have you received the 1.3? Can you deviate that one?
I can send it to you again if you want.
Yeah, just, yeah, you know, we would.
It was just, that came up at, that frequency, that we just approved that. The temporary outdoor storage until the actual IUP was approved, so.
All right. Council items, truth and taxation, December meeting, the 12th, 6:01 PM. The council meeting two is proceeding at the close of the hearing. Replacement of the cat loader. Am I missing something in this RCA change from last month or is it?
Mr. Mayor, he added the, um, the one thing that he missed was the, that we didn't have in here that should've been in here was the four-wheel drive.
That the new one has it?
That the new one would have it, yeah. Um, since the last meeting, there wasn't any feedback. I know we talked briefly about possible getting pricing on things that we may or may not use down the road. If we still want that, I can talk to Joe again about it and see what he has, 'cause I know he had made some calls about that, that we could get that information to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
And then the, then we just, sorry.
I, I, I'm not finished.
And then we just need to factor in transportation costs.
Were you gonna say something else, Councilmember Raynville?
Yeah, I, thank you. Um, the question of the, the estimates on the other attachments so that we can look at that for budgeting purposes.
Councilwoman Raynville?
To Councilmember Brian, so is Joe looking for us to approve up to $70,000 and has requested council action? He's just asking us to consider replacing it. I mean, is he gonna then come back with a true request for council action to go up to $70,000, either including or not including transportation charges?
I would say that was the intention after the August meeting, that, that if there was any other information that was needed, then we would go forward with the approval of to go out and start looking for a different loader. And I can, we can, I can talk to Joe and we can, if, you know, we can adjust that before Tuesday.
All right.
You're thinking, though, if we approve this, that basically Joe finds when he buys it.
If we find one that, that meets, meets the criteria that, that we were talking about and that it's, it's within the budgeted amount, that we could, we would go ahead and get it, yes.
And what happens to the old, the discussion items from last time? Are we selling it? Are we trading it or?
I know he was still looking at trade-in to see what was available. If, and if, depending, and I suppose part of it would be depending on where he, where he actually gets it from.
It would not be cost-effective to drive that down to someplace else to.
It may be if they give us a high enough trade, you never know.
Yeah, I think that's the challenge you run into would be if you're, if you're going through a, you know, a dealer, the price would be different. So, Mr. Mayor, the question would be, do we want to include that? How, how, do we wanna include that? We would have to find, decide on what we want to do with the other one before we can get something? Not knowing what we would, where it would want to go?
Well, I think the discussion we had last month was what was the plan? You know, it's unlikely on a used one you're gonna take a trade. They're, they're looking to dump it. A newer one, then you're, they're not gonna take your older one typically. I mean, that's saying it can't happen. So what, you know, how do we plan to sell it? What do we think we can get for it? The number we heard was 15,000, somebody was talking about a trade-in on that. As Joe said himself, I'll give you 15,000 for this, but you're paying more for that.
Right.
So I don't know if that's a realistic number or not, what are they going for on the market for what we've got? The other, the other thing that, you know, just to address, we gave the fire chief the approval to spend X amount of dollars for a rescue vehicle. And the first truck that came in looked really good. That can look too good. So we did a background check and to find out more where it came from. And it appears that thing was well underwater and it looked as good as it did because of its history. So I, I think it behooves Joe to make sure he knows what he's getting when he gets this. When Joe checked it out, he identified a number of things on that truck. So I would trust Joe to, to know that on the same thing. We had both Ramsey and Now Then check out the truck and decided not to pursue it because of potential problems. Joe was very helpful on that, very knowledgeable and I think went a long way towards helping us make a good decision on it. So I would anticipate he does the same thing here, but I would just expect that whatever he can do to know that he's getting a good deal here, he, you know, this one, they brought the truck to us, which is a little different than a loader like this out of state. But, you know, if we can put some clause in there that pending his inspection, I don't wanna use the equipment like that if you can, but I think Joe would be able to spot a lot of things.
Right.
And I'd like to know that before we wrote a check for $70,000. Anything else on the loader?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Reckert?
I guess, in my opinion, you know, if, say if we approve up to $70,000, we, Joe finds one down in Arkansas and everything he reads looks good, I trust him enough where if we were to cut a check and send him to Arkansas to get it, when he got down there and looked at it and realized, no, this isn't what I thought, that he's smart enough and knows enough where he'll say, no, we're not.
Well, I, I think, I think it's important to say it. I think we learned a lot with that truck and right now, what's gonna be, what's coming out soon, anything that's down south could be, could be suspect from the, from flood damage, you know? What's on the market right now, hopefully, wouldn't be, but obviously this truck was. It was a Houston truck prior to the current troubles, but it was pretty obvious it was residue way up in the headliner. No, I agree. I think, you know, I think that Joe's pretty sharp. I think we just need to say that he, he also has the ability to walk away if he suspects that's gonna be a problem of any sort. You know, we'll, we'll get him a vehicle, but I wanna make sure that, and I agree with the estimated cost on the attachments because I think that the point of getting a vehicle that's versatile like this is to be able to take it out on the road for emergencies, for snow and different things. And so if we're gonna use it with grapple buckets and the different, you know, different attachments, we should be planning on that in our, either our capital improvement plan or our budgeted, our budget cycle to say, we have the vehicle, let's now equip it so we can use it. I think the other thing is, um, before, maybe it was just the last one we looked at, had a three-yard bucket. Is he content with a two-yard bucket? 'Cause there was discussion about having a bigger bucket than, currently we have a two-yard, my understanding. He wanted something a little bigger, so. Again, check with him, you know, should he hold out for a three-yard or larger? Does it, does it get larger that is, you know, what's his, what's his limit? Is four yards not good for what we do here, but find out, but I don't want him to shoot too low and say, I really wish I had a three-yard bucket. Heritage festival donation request.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Raynville?
Um, in February of this year, the council directed the Heritage Festival to respond with some information in regards to their request for donation. And that information is attached. And so they respectfully request that the city release the donation.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Reckert?
Per the motion, I don't believe that everything has been fulfilled yet. Um, it's my understanding that city staff fixed, you know, the damage that was created by the park. Also, one of the items mentioned in the motion was for them to work with staff to get all the staff hours involved so we could get a total cost of what this event truly costs the city. I don't believe, I don't see that cost or hours anywhere. And then also, I don't see, you know, there's a comment on the back of the RCA that Heritage Festival, would you work with the fire department for possible volunteer hours for this involvement? Contact wasn't made with the department requesting volunteer improvement, so how is the cost for EMS for, and staffing the fireworks? Who pays for that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Raynville?
Um, to ultimately just, um, as far as the repairs, Ms. Phelan worked with Eric and, um, in her conversations with Eric, everything was fixed. If, if there's something that was not, that was not brought back to our attention. Um, the issue of the, um, okay. The dollar, the, um, the, I don't know what the, the, um, staff hours, staff had previously supplied that to council. That was right after the festival.
It was all part of the motion that we get all that together.
I apologize, I neglected to put that in.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Reckert?
And my, I guess, my whole objective here is, I just want to be able to show everybody and be transparent how much the city puts into anything that we do. You know, so there, again, there's the cash donation, there's the facility use fees that we don't collect, there's staff time, there's resources. We need to be transparent and let everybody see exactly how much money goes into that or anything for that matter. So, and part of the motion was to have that information and that information is not in this package.
Mr. Councilmember Reckert, I will have that by Tuesday. The issue of the Fire Department and Sheriff's Department, we didn't contact them because they are not in the business to volunteer hours. It's our understanding that Ramsey has changed the policy per one of, the firefighters told us Ramsey, City of Ramsey has changed their policy that they will no longer pay for firefighters for EMS at the festival, so we will forego having EMS during the breakfast time. And if anything occurs, we will call 911. As far as the fireworks, it's my understanding that the firefighters associated with working the fireworks, that that's part of the permit. And we don't pull, the festival doesn't pull the permit, the fireworks company does that.
But the city paid for firefighters to be there. They paid the hours for the firefighters to be there. That I know for fact.
But, but again, we don't, the festival does not pull that permit. If that was money that the fire department should've built that business, then that, the Fire Department should've built the business for that.
I don't think it operates.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Bettinger?
That is part of your festival, the fireworks. You're, you're hiring that company. As part of, as a part of that festival, it was the fireworks company's request for that area to be closed off, so that's part of your responsibility of holding that festival. That's your cost, your expense for that. You can't put that off on the city.
And, and Councilmember Bettinger, what I said is that we hire somebody to do the fireworks. What their needs are, they're responsible for their needs. No different than a food vendor or anyone else that we bring, you know, we came in, we hire, we bring them in, they know what they need to do to produce their product. The fireworks company is responsible for making sure that they have what they need. That's their job, that we write them a check and that's their job to provide that.
So the city doesn't do that for them, so then they won't do the fireworks? Is that what you want?
I didn't say that.
The fireworks are, they get their permit from the fire department, from the fire chief. They, they, the city doesn't issue the permit, the fire department does.
It's still a heritage day activity. They're responsible for the fireworks and everything that goes on.
And they, and they pay for the fireworks and the permit is from the fire department. And so the fee that they pay for the permit.
There is no fee. There's no fire, there's no, there's no firework fee that I'm aware of.
Yeah, there is. I think that, that the chief has, um, for Ramsey and for Now Then, has foregone the fee. But there is, there is in most municipalities, there's a fee that's paid for the fire department.
Because the Robert Dukey or Dubnike, that's, he actually requested a fire permit for, or a fireworks permit for his house even, so that he could do some for, so he could see his displays and there was no charge for that.
That's up to the fire department.
Okay, but, but.
'Cause the city doesn't, doesn't do that.
But the city is billed for the firefighters that attend for the fire, for the heritage. So I don't know if maybe that's something that you need to talk to Mr. Dubnike about, that he's responsible? Or you need to talk with the fire chief and say, you need to be billing him? Or you need to talk with the Fire Chief and say, "You need to be billing him for any firefighters."
Because I know that's, 100% positive, last year the city, Now Then, paid that cost.
It did, we did.
And again, that's, I want to know...
If we start charging the fireworks company, they're going to charge you. So that's going to go right in a complete circle, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
To Councilmember Ringville, I would say that it, who, that, it sounds like that issue needs to be clearly defined in the contract with the fireworks department or company. If that, if there are just charges for whatever, who's responsible for it?
And I'd be honest, I've never seen the contract. That's not part of my responsibility. I'll get those issues, questions answered by Tuesday. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
Letter D, request for maintenance staff for preparation for the festival. In the past, we've requested specific items completed by the staff in order to prepare for the community festival. And again, this year, we're asking for those same things. It's moving some bleachers, two sets of bleachers, moving wooden picnic table, some other picnic tables from within the pavilion area to just outside the pavilion area, soccer nets, three disc golf baskets. And we do, we do that so that people see that we do have the disc golf and we give, don't, we have turnip, like...
Demonstrations.
Demonstrations, and they receive disc golf kits. And that the ball fields and the grounds and such be cut or mowed prior to the festival, which is just regular work that they do. That a key to the janitor closet at the park pavilion be provided in case we need access into that for supplies or to toilet overflows, which has occurred before. We will provide some larger bathroom waste baskets, the waste baskets that are in the bathroom are very small. And we will provide larger waste baskets. And we will also cordon off the area of the hockey rink to prevent any disruption there. We also will have volunteers come in and do weed whipping around all the fencing and do some of the preliminary work in preparing the grounds. And the work that we're asking them to do, other than daily routine, is moving city items, using city equipment versus us bringing equipment and moving city equipment. I think it's better that the city staff does that. Are there any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Two quick questions, one for clarification. Under background and supplement information, you had in there, again, this year, we are requesting the same work before along with the floor grates and the floors, fire station being left in place?
Right. Years back, Joe would take the grates out of the floor in the fire station. And that's a lot of work and they're heavy. And so what we've done is changed how we set the tables up.
Okay.
So now we have the banquet tables going across that so they can stay in place.
Okay.
So that, and I apologize, I can...
No, I was just clarifying because obviously setting up for the open house afterwards.
Yep, yeah.
And then I guess the only other item was, do we, under request for council actions, do we want to add a number nine? And had state staff put back everything after done?
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
Letter E, the street closure. Given the previous conversation, this may be, should be responsibility of the person that pulls the fireworks permit. But I know that in the past, we've never formally requested to close Iguana for the fireworks, and this was just a formal request to do so. I believe that that was a requirement of the Fire Department, if I'm, if memory serves me, that that be closed during the time the fireworks are being explored.
I think the Fire Department has chosen to do that, but we've never been informed of that as a city. And I don't know that anybody on the festival's been informed of that, but the Fire Chief said he chooses to do that. Probably makes sense that the car show requested temporary closing of Iguana. Yes, Fire Department's going to do it, and they're going to do it by their choice. At least here, the city now would at least know about it. But I think that's been the Fire Department's determination in the past, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And obviously, then along with that, his source of funding is not applicable, but we need to clarify that. Again, who pays for that?
I would assume it was just you place your fire trucks there here and there.
Well, again, but... Well, and again, that, along with, you know, who pays for the fire staff to be there in general? You know, so if, once you clear up the one on the first one, that goes right along with it.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
The last one is city participation in the business expo at the festival. Previous years, council and mayor have staffed a booth at the festival, and we're asking that we restart that tradition. And asking city staff to also assist us with that. And again, that the mayor and council are invited to volunteer at the booth. It's an opportunity for the residents to have interaction with the elected officials and/or the city staff at a time where there's, you know, this is the one time of the year in the city that the residents are in one location and would have the ability to interact with staff or council, mayor, council. I apologize to Cory today. When I typed this up, I put in that the deputy clerk staffed the booth, and I didn't mean to disregard Cory and her position. I just was thinking Lori lives in the city and would maybe be interested in doing that. So I apologize to Cory for that today. And just then the staff would determine whether they want to flex their hours during that payroll cycle or request overtime. It's up to the staff to decide. So if they...
I stand you, you really mean Cory, right?
Cory, Cory or Lori, whoever.
I mean, Cory sets the schedule for the staff, so I think it's, you need to determine whether you want to flex hours. Obviously, you guys coordinate that regularly anyway, but I think it's up to you to determine how you want to run the week, so...
And if there, if there is overtime involved, I estimate it between zero and 250. At the top of my head, I don't really remember what Lori makes. I just picked a number and added in suppose, you know, Medicaid, Social Security, and some money for pension and the other benefits.
And that should be plenty of it.
Yeah.
Five hours.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only comment I have is, in the background and supplement information, it's a comment that says, "As a festival, is the largest event held in the city for the benefit of the residents?" Number one, it's definitely not the largest event. Threshing Show is obviously much larger. And I know it's not just Now Then residents who do go to Heritage Festival. And I guess from that aspect, being cynical, what is, what is the largest event for the benefit of the residents? I guess, how does it benefit our residents?
The festival is a day for the residents. It is the largest event for the benefit of the residents. It allows the residents to come to us, to the park and be part of activities all day long. It's free admission, free parking. It's a very inexpensive day for the residents to come and participate in the event. We don't do it, I mean, it's, it's a benefit for the residents. It's a community event that is put on by community members. Our volunteer hours were in there, where a rough estimate was about 3,200 hours throughout the year for the different pieces that are part of this festival. The committee doesn't benefit from it. It's, they do it for the residents. No different than other communities that have events for their residents. And yes, there are people from other cities that come here. You can't say you can't come in because you don't live in Now Then. But it is the largest event that is focused for, focused on the residents. The Threshing Show is a private organization that is not, the focus of that is not to bring in Now Then residents. They have, you know, I think the Saturday, there was 30,000 people through there. You know, that's geared for a much larger audience. This festival is focused on and done for the benefit of our residents.
But you also can't say it's free of charge, because dinner's not free of charge.
There's free admission.
But you...
It's free admission, free parking. And you can go and have a very reasonable day for a family to come in and have fun all day long for a very reasonable amount. Nothing is totally free. We would have to raise a lot more money. And maybe at some point in the game, we will be able to raise enough money that it would be free for everyone, but at this point, it is not. But it is free admission, it's free parking, there's a lot of free activities. We have a free will donation breakfast, so you can come in and pay $2 for breakfast. And we do that as a benefit to our residents so that they're not obligated or feel that they have to pay for a family of five to six, an extreme amount of money. And we do that by getting donations from businesses. Again, so that we can offer a breakfast and dinner at a very reasonable price for the residents.
Other comments? So to the specifics of this, other than the wording of the background, Cory, since this affects you and the staff, do you have an opinion?
No, I practically worry about it. And the only thing that we considered is that because the pay period that would be starting would be when she would be doing the P and Z and stuff, so she might be more needed in the office than to take the time off, so we'll make it work.
Anything else? All right. Now, Now Then Lions Club has submitted a request to move the 5K back on the city streets.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment I have on this is the source of funding is not, non-applicable. It would be, be charged if there, if you're going to approve the use of firefighter for that. So that is incorrect.
My understanding, talking to them before, that they didn't need a firefighter because they had Lions members that were in the team.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
I, I have to admit, I've never participated in the 5K because I've been busy with the festival. But in the past, we did have a Lion that was certified EMT. And by virtue of looking at this, I'm assuming that that party is unavailable. That's because I know that they have, I know that they have provided their own in the past. So I'm assuming that person isn't available.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I do know the years that they did it on the roads, it was fire. Because they got an ATV from Ramsey Police Department, and that's what they drove on the road. So the first couple of years when the 5K was on the roads, it was fire. EMS covered it.
Councilmember Rickert, I remember an email or a letter or email from Judy Horella, who always has been the chair of this committee, that they've never requested fire support until, whether or not...
The first two years, I was there and I ran it, and Fire EMS was there.
Okay, well, I just remember her saying that she had not requested fire, so I don't know how that, I don't know.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, to me, this is a little different from the Heritage Festival due to the fact that in the past, and Now Then Lions have raised and donated money to the Fire Department. So there is a difference, in my opinion, there. You know, it's two different things. You're not comparing apples to apples. And you can say what you want, Mary, but it is two different things. The Heritage Festival does not give any money to anything outside the city, to any organization, to anything in there. The Lions, regardless if it's the Now Then Lions or the Ramsey Lions, have donated funds to the Fire Department or other entities within the city. There is a difference there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
Councilmember Rickert, and that's the charter of the Lions. The festival is set up to organize and present the festival. They're not set up to raise money that is raised for the benefit, to go to the, to fund the festival and then turn around and give it to another agency. So those, you're not comparing apples to apples there. Again, the Lions are set up, their charter is to raise funds and donate those funds. The festival is set up to raise funds for the festival.
And I believe that's what I stated.
But then how can you compare them? They're two different things.
I said they were two different things.
But then what?
Who's providing the signs?
Mr. Mayor, I do not know. You'd have to ask Judy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in the past, the city has not provided any signs.
I guess there's a, there's a comment in here. We'll communicate with Joe and ask him what type of signs we need.
Yeah, but then I think she says that, and we will get the signs needed. So I think it must be that...
But how do you join them?
Maybe he's ran a lot of 5Ks.
Well, and in their indemnity agreement, they say, required by the city engineer and in performance of a manual on uniform traffic control devices. But Shane, though.
Hanging Street is not the safest street to be walking on. They have a 5K, there's a lot of curves and stuff in that, and somebody was to get hit. They have a 5K, there's a lot of curves and stuff in that, and somebody was to get hit, and there's no warning signs or anything. Even if there's warning signs, it's not the best road to be having a 5K on.
Do we know why they want to switch it back to there rather than the park?
I didn't, see, this, I got my packet, so. Mr. Williams might have it.
Yeah, it's those terrain problems. People complain of turning their ankles and stuff.
So when they ran in the park, did they, did they run around the gravel roads in the park, or did they just run in the park?
Um, there's a trail, and some of, some of it was on the park because I heard complaints of people turning their ankles because the fields were too bad, so I, I would ascertain from that information that it was some of it was, um, grass, grassy area, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
It, it, it was a combination of, um, yeah, we ran, they ran the tr- I, I helped set up one time when it was October and not, and not at the festival time, it was later. We ran the trails, and then we ran along softball fields and such, and the terrain was tough, um, people were falling into the holes and, and losing their shoes in the holes that were in the soccer fields and such. It was more work setting it up for the Lions to do it, and the attendance dropped considerably when they went to the, um, park versus Ingon. People really liked, um, running on the, the dirt on Ingon, it was a beautiful scenery, and, um, they, they had better turnout, I remember Judy saying that.
Does it start on Ingon and go to Tiger or, and come back, or?
Mr. Mayor, I do not know that, because I've not participated on it there. I know that they had runners at the cor- at the curves directing people, um, and that, it's just what I've heard at the meetings, is they had people out there, they had volunteers out there directing people, standing at the curves, watching for traffic. Notified, they notified the residents, um, that they were going to have the event on the street.
Well, do you know who prepared the, the agreement?
I'm wondering if it was one from previously that was done.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I know years passed when they had it on Ingon, yeah, it went down, went all the way through, and it came back and ended over, um...
Two-hundred-and-fifth and Tiger?
Yeah.
So then they picked people up there?
Yeah, they had a small shuttle bus that would then shuttle you back from there over to A and B's parking lot. So I don't know if that's the plan again this year or not, but I would assume they'd have to have something, because that's a big, big jump from there back, unless they ran it the other way, but still, it's a big...
Yeah, they're busing people somehow.
Yeah. They have any parking over there unless they use the...
Okay, yeah.
...warrants land, but...
Well, why don't we need a note before Tuesday? Somebody has a manual on uniform traffic control devices.
I know I...
Name or name.
I know I gave Judy two names of, I know, like, two different sign companies that do that stuff, but I don't know if she's talked to anybody.
Okay, so is there going to be a question, somebody has to get back to Judy with a question on signage. What's she, what's she doing and how does she know how to do it? And then the question on a firefighter for an hour and a half. Do the firefighters bill in one-hour increments? So it'd be, you know, two hours, maybe twelve eighty these days?
No, it's a, probably not, it's a fifteen, I think.
I don't know.
Oh, I got it.
Check your pace out.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, so less than fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a medical, and there, at the, um, threshing show, there were a couple of medicals. How many people typically respond if it's called in?
I was on one of the two, I think there was, well, there's always a duty officer truck, so they're typically there first. I think that the one I was on, there's a fire chief duty officer, then four firefighters in a truck.
And if something like this, if there were a firefighter out here in EMS and somebody collapsed during the 5K, would they typically then assess the situation and call the duty officer out, or?
No, odds are they'd probably, you know, do what they could, but still call line one on.
Well, they'd have a ti- similar response to what they have at the threshing show.
Yeah.
And at that, does the threshing show get charged? Do we know?
Good question.
Does the city pay for that? There were two calls, I'm assuming they came out of Station Three, but, so two calls out of Station Three during the threshing show. Would that be billed to the threshing show, the individuals, or?
I don't recall any, it's, it'd be, that's a good question.
In all my years, this is the first time we've, I know that we've ever been called to the grounds.
And have it be twice.
Mm-hmm. So that'd be, yeah, it'd be a question, who, who gets billed for that? Because typically, bill our residents anyways.
Well, yeah, I mean, in a case like that, I would think that we would bill the threshing show because it's their event that we have to get called to, just like we would with the two-car accident, we'd bill half and half to people and that, so. But I'll take into that, I don't know that it's in this current billing.
There's a lot of people at that one.
Well...
Sheriff's had like three vehicles there, and a hamlet, and the big fire truck, and they had the two...
Yeah, the duty trooper, the chief, and then the fire truck, and then I...
Is that the Saturday one?
Two, yeah, two or three squads, and then the ambulance, and...
Is that the one that was the actual medical, or the one that...
The one I was on was definitely an actual medical.
Third one was anxiety, one was actual.
Yeah, well, I know the one, the one on Saturday was an actual medical.
So, what's the council think about a firefighter?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So in that case, if something does happen, you know, it could be, get, you know, the cost could definitely be a lot more than two hours of a firefighter's time.
Well, at, at that point, though, you treat it as an incident within the city. I think the, the intention here is to have somebody, because you are out exercising, and then 5K generally attracts a wider range than a, a marathon might, um, that if there's, I think the intention is to have somebody there to respond quickly while other help is called in. So, I, I think that the anticipation is if somebody does have an emergency, typical emergency procedures and cost would be incurred, but this is preventative, so somebody's there right away. I think my, my assumption. You know, I, I would think it'd be similar at any other event in town. In the past, when, when there's, you know, there hasn't been an incident, but there hasn't been the threshing show typically either. I think if something happens at another event, even if you have staff there, if the fire department's called in, or the, you know, sheriff's called in, there's going to be treated like any other incident. So, somebody has to ask Judy about signs, and then we have to, we'll have to make a decision on firefighters. A firefighter.
Being they donate to the, back to the fire department, I have no problem with...
I was thinking, based on what Paul said earlier, probably that would be the consensus.
As far as the signage, they could check with, uh, it was in the same building as North Valley, there's a sign company right over here that does it for eleven every day, so they may have some signs in hand that, they can tell them, we're having a 5K, what would you recommend, and what would you cost? And they, they may even donate it. In the past, when it was Trans Signal, when they closed the road to stop Trans Signal, put barricades out there for free.
Yeah, and that was one of the two names I had given to Judy.
It's not Trans Signal anymore, no, it's, uh, Safety Sign, I think. That sounds like they cover it, because, I mean, they send letters out to all the houses and everything, and, but, yeah, and they put post people at the intersections, and they have to put signs on the ends, so if the neighborhoods all know about it, then it's signed, and it should be okay.
Any other questions or comments there? All right.
Mr. Mayor, one... I just noticed that on the RCA, there wasn't a date for the event that I saw. There is on the agreement, but I didn't see it on the RCA. Most I just missed it. The date for the event?
It's, it, it is September twenty-third.
Yeah, well, it's on here, on here, but not on the RCA, so I don't know if we needed to add it to that, or would it be beneficial to add it to that?
All right. Now, Mr. Councilmember Bryan.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, um, noticed that it came, has, came up this year at least once, and, um, noticed that in previous year, in 2015, it was discussed about getting some signs made for planning and zoning use for the la- uh, land use that we could use for posting. At the time, it was, um, tabled to be put into the budget for, for this year, and it wasn't at the time, I was just curious to, wanted to bring it up to the council to see if this is something that we wanted to do, um, and then we can find out, we'd have to find out if the quotes are still valid, and then arrange for, um, funding, if that's what we want to do this year.
I think one of them, you need to identify what you want to say so that cost can be realistic, because I think that's what we found out last time, what do you want on the signs, so they know what the cost might be. I think we've had offers from other communities as well, I know Elk River has a sign shop, and County has a sign shop, that there's been some discussion about, um, Elk River had, at one time, said that they could produce signs for us at their cost, so. It's certainly worthwhile checking, I don't know, Randy, does the county do that for...
Time and material.
So, starting with the municipalities around us, if they got sign shops, the County, Elk River, I don't know what Ramsey does.
Mr. Mayor, I know we have an Nowland resident who works for warning lights, who does all that kind of big, kind of signage too, and I, I bet they would do it for that time and material too.
So I, I think it's reasonable, and so what are you asking here, that, that we get a cost, and, and somebody's got to put together what it's going to say on the signs?
Yeah, that was the part that I wasn't, it didn't know if there was a standard.
I think what Ramsey has is, is pretty standard, you know, if something's going to happen here, call this number to, to find out what. You call the numbers, they, you know, they go right to their, you know, they give you the information either immediately, or they call you right back with, here's what's proposed on that site. So, doing that, we'd have to have, prepare staff, if we, anytime we put out a sign, everybody who sees it's going to be calling somebody. Right now, that would be Cory and Lori, so. So I think getting the signs made is one thing, making sure staff is aware that they'll be getting calls, if we did something, you put it, put some excitement on Cory's part, put a sign down on the southwest corner there.
I got a picture of one that somebody...
Maybe we should have a sign say XXX, and then that way we can hear, maybe people will call. We just wanted to catch your attention.
Do you want me, you want me to print those? I have that sheet of example signs still.
Yeah, I understand.
If you want, it might help you think of what, what you wanted to say.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if somebody had the picture of the one for Ramsey, because I could give it to my neighbor and just have him, what's the cost for blah, blah, blah sign, like, give us an idea.
I think we talked about, um, one was a variance, and one was a... Public hearing.
Could be just a generic statement, a land use change.
Yeah, and that way you don't have to buy, you know...
City of Nowland, or no.
Guys don't have to worry about which one to put up.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think too, um, in talking with, um, Mr. Bryan, we discussed about where this funding would come from, and these sources of funding that he has listed are not really valid, the way he has them listed, because the P and Z, we budget the part-time employees or for P and Z members.
Yeah, I made a note on that, that...
Yeah, and then as far as the public notices, well, first...